I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head for a moment. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with hearts full of gratitude and concern. We pray for the family of Ryan Tungy. We ask for your protection and guidance over all who live, work, and gather here. Surround us with your peace and keep our streets, homes, and places of worship safe from harm. Please continue to pray for those folks that keep our lights on in the puddle run. Pray for those folks that clean our streets and keep the snow on the edges. Pray for those folks in the legislature that are trying to meet North Dakota a proud and great place to live. In your holy name we pray. It's having a senior moment, Ty. Almost forgot how to start the pledge of allegiance. Our Father, Noah, God of all. Too many concussions.
I'd raise a bet for Carter still, you know.
There you go.
A month is about up.
Yeah. Oh, boy. All right, we give the reading approval minutes from January 20th, please.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Weidrich, second. Second by Folkers. Any discussion? All in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the agenda, please. Monty, are we good? No changes?
No changes, Jeremy.
All right, the motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Motion by Folkers, second. Second by Weidrich. Discussion. All in favor of approving this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The agenda is set. All right, 5A, engineers report. Monty, what else do we have that's...
Um, there's no action items on the engineers' report. I did draft a letter that was discussed at the January 20th meeting. And dropped it on the screen. It was sent out to everybody. Just requesting that they make contact regarding a correction plan and...
I think it's a necessary reminder. Pat, have you seen it?
No.
Monty, look at it real quick, too.
Take a pat.
You got to see it, you seen it?
I have, actually.
Better not have been speeding our way over here.
I wasn't, wasn't. Last week, though, yes, I was speeding.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, smoked.
Casey, we're just reviewing the letter that you received from Monty, the President of Williams Builders.
Okay.
I just want to have Pat look at it and just have a... Everybody just consensus to send along.
Sure.
Do you see?
All right, so if everybody's in agreement that we need to get that mailed out to Williams and Monty will get that out tomorrow then. Pat, you see any news? Yeah, thank you. Uh, anything else, Monty, for engineers' report?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving down to requested citizens, we have a couple raffle permits. Um, Hazen Memorial Hospital Auxiliary and Figure Skating Club. Monty, I'm assuming that they follow the guidelines that we have for...
Yes, I did email the figure skating club and their proceeds will be used to just support the program to reduce costs to anybody wanting to do the skating program.
I'll make a motion. A motion to approve both.
Okay, motion by Weidrich to approve both raffle permits.
Second.
Second by Folkers. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That brings us all the way down to our reports. Water, sewer, garbage. Put the lift station pump there. Even though I guess... Or the old pump. Pump is going to cost, uh... Cost... Cost of ten thousand, ten thousand, uh... At ten thousand. Got five hundred bucks. The old pump, I guess rebuild it. And the new pump is then, is then a thirteen... A thirteen-five. So the notes that I saw, saw them on that old pump, I thought it was in like twenty-some, I guess, years old. Older, but I know that note that I see had it was in like forty years old.
Yeah, when I talked to Jared, he said that's one of the forty-year-old pumps, but we do have older ones still working.
Seems kinda crazy that it's only three thousand dollars more for a new one.
You know, the... You know, the parts were... Parts on the old pump were... Were, I guess, obsolete, I guess.
So they were gonna have to make parts to make it work or retrofit it?
Yeah, I'm not sure on that part, you know, I know that they weren't, I guess, made anymore, so... So is getting a new one's faster than rebuilding the old one, then? Uh, I don't think so.
Not necessarily, no. Wishful thinking, huh?
Open. So I guess with that, then I move... Who'd that we buy the new pump? Pump at a thirteen, I guess, five. Okay, motion by Stern?
I'll second that.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion.
I don't think it pays to stick ten thousand into an old pump when you can buy a new one for thirteen thousand.
Is there like an industry status like this, like the best of the best? Or do we know if that, how that works?
Even on that name brand there, I have never... You know, I guess... Never, I guess... Never, I guess... I guess, I've seen that name before, but...
Sure. You mean you've never been shopping for a lift station pump on your own before?
I have.
Just kidding. Little difference.
Well, actually.
We went, they went with this one because then it can't interchange with some of our other ones.
Okay, so it's more interoperability of it, okay. Makes sense.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Stern?
Aye.
Weidrich?
Aye.
Folkers?
Aye.
Overdower?
Aye. Motion very... Any else, Casey?
Nope.
All right, Jason's out here with the streets. Um, Dave, let's give us a little street update.
Um, I'll plug all day today. We're gonna keep plugging away the rest of the week or whatever. Hopefully get a little more spill over the weekend, maybe next week, days or whatever, but...
So Wednesday is seventy percent chance to get on Wednesday, too?
So, yeah, we're just gonna keep plugging away at it. That one's working good, so...
True. All right. Have you had a chance to do any checking on new loaders or spec sir working in that yet?
No, I was gonna start that here probably mid-month.
Okay. Thank you. Finance busing library.
I have nothing to report for this time.
Police fire forestry.
All right, we have some run reports for the police department for last month. Officer Byers had nineteen. Officer Samantha Melberg had thirty-seven. Officer Samantha Melberg had forty-four. Chief Wolf had thirty-nine. We did promote Tony to sergeant. Done here real recently. Then I was hearing some complaints and I have been for a couple of years on our pay for a police department, so... I got Beulah's and Mercer County's pay and we are quite a bit lower compared to them. Now, when it comes to other counties, um, we're fairly comparable to some of the other counties out there. But by looking at this, we're, in some instances, five dollars an hour lower. If you look at, um, like, one of the officers in Beulah that's only got one point eight years, he's getting paid five dollars an hour higher than some of our officers that have been here for quite a few years. So, that being said, I did put on here for Monty what it costs per, per hour of increase, or per dollar increase per year. And that's including everything into it. Just because we give them a dollar doesn't mean it costs us a dollar. It costs us roughly a dollar twenty-three an hour. I don't think we can get completely all up to the same wage in one year, but I'd like to get close. Then I could make a motion to give all the officers a three dollar an hour pay raise.
I'll second that. Motion by Weidrich, second by Folkers. Discussion. I'd like to pay Jim's people ten dollars an hour more. However, Beulah's taxes that they give, they have way more money than we do. We, this is something that I think we need to do with a budget and not just do in the middle, middle of the year. Is it warranted? Absolutely, hundred and ten percent, but I think our community doesn't realize either that... There's a balance and it's what we bring in. You know, we don't bring in twelve billion dollars and only pay out a million, you know, it's, it's, um, I... We, we're gonna need an officer. It's hard to find officers. Beulah's been looking, the county's been looking, everybody around the state's been looking. So I don't, you know, it's one of those things where is this gonna help us attract somebody? Maybe, a little bit. Um, I think our community's better than a lot of other communities. I think our community does a lot less, our, our police officers have a lo, a better area to take care of than a lot of other communities do. I don't know, I'm, I'm mixed on it. I would like to, but I don't know if now's the time, if it's, you know, this is something we should talk about in September.
I've thought of that, too. And that's why I didn't try to go the full amount, 'cause it's a substantial amount of money, even three dollars an hour.
Sure.
With, and I thought with losing Tony or AJ, that would help cushion that. We still may go over budget, but it'll definitely help cushion that, 'cause I don't foresee us getting another officer anytime soon.
With the twenty-three dollar, fifty cent an hour starting wage, I mean, that eliminates, people are scrolling through the pages and pages of agencies that are hiring. I mean, they're looking at, you know, when you're briefly just scrolling through, you're looking at those courses and stuff and you're seeing on average twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollars an hour for starting wages and now twenty-three's like, ooh, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, but same with our teachers.
I, I understand.
Same with, you know, a lot, a lot of things.
Not saying we won't get somebody, maybe somebody will wanna come, that's newer, come to a smaller community to get their feet wet.
So what's this gonna cost us?
Well, I don't hundred percent know, because this number Monty gave us on a dollar is based off of four officers. So, I guess I could do with that.
And then if we lose AJ, then we're doing a lot more overtime as well.
Correct.
Which costs us a lot more.
Which would make us need another officer that much worse.
Absolutely, being the rest.
It's now we're facing burnout, for sure.
So, if my math is mathing correctly, it'd be approximately twenty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. That's without the added overtime stuff, you know, that'd be just the base salary.
Jared? Yes, please. You know, I know that came stuff in the past, I know it's been brought up. You know, I know that we do, do, I mean, I see medical plan is... Was really good here. Right. You know, so I mean, so I mean, something like either that, you know, we can... Just pay more, you know, upfront and stuff, enough of that, then we can have a medical plan, I guess. It's not as good.
Correct.
It's what they have to pay in to it, I mean.
Does county, county does pay fully for the medical?
Just as of last year, we, because we had some extra budget, money in the budget somewhere that they're looking to pay our premiums for X amount of time, you know.
So it's a...
It's an indefinite thing, though, as far as I'm aware, you know, I'm all about.
So, that's one thing I thought of in the past, you know, we do pay for the full thing, where I didn't think the county did, well, I did hear that they do, so I...
And there's a surprising number that do, which is, I didn't, I thought we were like one of those unicorns, right? As far as the city goes, paying a hundred percent premiums for everybody, but it's starting to get more and more common. I'm thinking that's probably because people are needing more and more, I don't know the reason is, but...
Yeah, it's a lot of money. That's why I can't go the full five dollars without the budget. I'm also looking in our budget and me and Jim sat down one, one day trying to figure out where we can cut some money. I'm still trying to do all that yet, too, um, where we can move, move some of that stuff up to wages to help cover it. But I'm still working on that. Haven't got clarification on one thing yet. I'm still kinda trying to figure it out. One is the radio and tower expenses. Other than when we purchased the new radios a couple of years ago, that one hasn't been touched. I believe that's five thousand in that line item?
Yes.
I believe so. Where, other than when we purchased those radios, it hasn't been touched, so just thinking we could drop that down and move a bunch of that up in, um, wages.
Is that including the, the new radios compatible with the new system?
Correct, that's the ones we purchased.
Those are purchased already, those are already purchased, oh.
Already purchased. We have one that isn't for the new vehicle that we have.
But just one radio, so like everything else?
Correct. We have one mobile radio we gotta figure out.
I got you.
We did get a quote for that, but it isn't, don't think it's the right radio. Frequencies are different from the other one.
Yeah, it's, uh, up to eight hundred and the other one was up to nine hundred.
Yeah. It's like they were a hundred frequency higher, so...
Yeah, it's like eight hundred megahertz system is a siren, so...
And then, uh, the part-time employee, that was seven thousand some odd dollars. And that line item, and that was mainly set aside for Rhonda, uh, for cleaning, which no longer cleans up there. Um, we can't shift the whole thing up because we're using part of that for the security detail, so it comes out of that line item. Um, but that'll move a bunch of that up, too, so not all of it, we just haven't finished that yet.
Who, who cleans?
Uh, right now, the officers have been themselves.
Jim, does your family use our insurance plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm assuming Tony and Sam probably do, too, you know, there's no alternate, there's...
Yeah, I, my daughter's on honor, you know, they're over twenty-six, so just like the line.
Sure.
And I think Tony's still got Chloe. I'm not sure about Trinity, if she's over twenty-six yet or not, I'm not sure.
I don't think so. And then two, I guess, like to add two, I know this is brought up in the past, too, but, but then two, the schedules, then two, I guess, have, I guess, like overtime in them?
Correct.
I guess, so, so I was kinda told that that's kinda why it's lower, you know, upfront, you know?
But that is on here. They don't get paid overtime until, um, so their, instead of two thousand eighty hours is their base, their base is twenty-one eighty-four. So that extra hundred and four hours is not overtime at standard time. Um, so they, in a way, they kinda get the shaft in that. They're losing out.
Why isn't it then overtime?
They get overtime for any time over one hundred and sixty-eight hours in a twenty-eight day period. So that's why they're calculated at two thousand one hundred and eighty-four hours, because they need the one hundred and sixty-eight hours in a twenty-eight day period.
I have to deal with like Garcia or whatever, I cannot figure out the rules, okay.
Monty, what does this do to our budget then, per, how, what, for absorb it? Obviously it blows our, it blasts our budget, yeah.
It won't absorb it completely, I mean, you have other areas in the general fund that probably won't be overspent or whatever, so it will not. I don't anticipate it actually pushing your general fund over.
Yeah.
But you never know what can happen.
Yeah, that is the thing, and we do have, you know, like the forestry stuff. We hardly, didn't hardly spend any of the forestry stuff last year. Probably not gonna again this year. I doubt we're gonna get a forester. Granted, I do know Monty taped some of that stuff when Dave screwed up, does stuff, up to that forestry stuff.
Moves over, yeah.
Um, and then we did approve the tree purchase, which will be more than last year if people do it. But, you know... It's a tough one, but I, I don't feel, like, that gap is pretty large, you know?
And what is the status with Officer Byers and his hours he's putting in, and do we have any idea how long he can continue to be part-time for us, or any, any of that?
He only needs twenty-one hours a week to keep the insurance, so that's about all he's working.
So to keep the insurance?
Under our policy, anyone working twenty-one hours, an average of twenty-one hours a week is eligible for single benefits.
Do we know how long he's gonna continue to do that?
Tell me, get somebody pleased, unless he comes out of blue and changes his mind.
Okay. That doesn't help. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Casey? I mean... So I mean, I think that this should get a raise, yes, you know, you know, but, but then I think it's unfair to... You know, the rest of the... You know, I guess, city, city, I guess, employees, too, you know, I mean, I mean, I would like to see those guys, too.
I can empathize with that, I can empathize with that.
I mean, so I mean, you know...
My, my, I guess where I'm coming from with it is, my concern is that I foresee... Is we do have three officers. There's been times where we run just three officers as a department, when we have one that's injured, like, for months on end. And that's a huge strain on not only the, just the three continually having to juggle shifts and just, it, it messes up a lot. And then the accrued overtime because of that, I mean, but where are we at with overtime? As far as being at overtime for the three officers working? Compared to this kinda thing, like, if that makes sense?
Well, yeah, in the past five, six years, we had Officer Melberg out for extended time.
Yeah.
We had, um...
Jim was out there for a while.
Jim, yeah, um, before that, Mike Freilich was out for quite a while, you know, then...
Sorry.
Right.
And these events are all, like, you, you foresee an end, like, it's not an indefinite thing, that, you know, they're out for X amount of time. Like, if there's an ACL tear, they're out for, you know, estimated X amount of time, you know, you can kind of anticipate these things and know that there's an end to it, this is indefinite. And with twenty-three dollars and fifty cents an hour... At twenty-three dollars and fifty cents an hour, I foresee it, like, really being an X amount of time, because I, 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 I just don't see much hope for attracting any, any applicants at that, that wage.
Or, or even worse, we get an officer that leaves due to pain. And then we're wound up, too.
Because county's hiring, Beulah's hiring, we live right here in Hazen.
Because we're hiring every...
Yeah, I know, that's what's tough, right?
Yeah.
I do know Tony talked to me once, just briefly, about possibly sending somebody to the academy. And I told him I wasn't completely opposed of it, but I don't, tactfully, I don't know how to do it. But I told him to go talk to that individual he had in mind and see if that guy was still interested or not. And if he was, then we could sit down as commissioners and figure out how we'd wanna do that. But I haven't heard back from Tony on that yet.
When was that?
Couple weeks ago? So I don't, I don't know if that guy is even remotely interested in it anymore.
To your comment, Casey, I don't think there's quite the discrepancy in other areas, like Dave's guys versus Beulah's street play. I think there's a less, a less gap there than there is that with the police department. Am I accurate there, Monty? That our other employees are...
Probably not quite as bad.
Yeah. So I remember when Kenny was saying that, well, Beulah's, they don't have insurance, finally we do.
I don't know if they do, no.
The other thing is that if we do get, get a new guy, he's only gonna start at eighty-five percent of whatever wage. Every six months he goes up until he gets, I don't know, depending on experience. Now, if he has experience, he might start out at ninety, but nothing's gonna be a hundred percent right away.
Jim, any other comments you wanna make about this?
I think, yeah, he's covered everything.
What do you foresee happening if the wage doesn't increase? Like, what do you see happening?
I don't know. We only got one application now. And everybody knows who that is.
Sure.
Shoot.
Okay. So what do you see happening if we do get, do the wage increase? And do you foresee more applications, huh?
Some evolutions, some lights.
Do we need to start off with opponents?
I'm hoping the lake, you know, there are always people here, some of these, you know, fishermen or something, would like to go into the lake, but it stays off. I'm hoping the lake, you know, draws people here, somebody that, you know, add fishermen or something, would like going to the lake, but it stays off.
Yeah.
It's, it's hard to say, you know, what's, that's, that's a really tough question, who wants to be up anymore too.
I mean, we can only hope this can start trending upward as of recent, but it's gonna take a minute.
I know, his marks can't, so there's citizens on patrol, and you get enough people.
I think they're cutting back on, they're cutting back on their S R O programs too in the schools as well.
So I guess my concern is, is, I mean, weighing the cost, I mean, it's, it deals with public safety and that's just really. It worries me when things in that area get cut.
We're not cutting.
No, I understand, I'm just saying, but I mean, ultimately, if things start, I mean, not cut, that wasn't the right terminology, but. Be, things occurring to be, that, you know, end up being a detriment to public safety, I suppose, and then, next thing you know, you're looking at a situation where. We do have people leave the department, and now we're down to one guy, what do we do with that? I mean, do we end up dissolving Hazen's police department and taking a contract with the county, like, what does that look like, I mean, that's a tough decision in and of itself.
Yeah.
I knew this was gonna be a tough one, um, no matter how you look at it, it's gonna.
Well, we all agree.
Correct.
That it's important.
Yes.
And that if we had a bigger budget, that it would be an issue, and it'd be totally justified to give whatever, yeah. Jim, do your, you and your officers feel like we're at an appropriate level of. Having your vehicles, your, your equipment, your, your support from Monty, or your support from anybody else? Or is there, or do you feel like we might be way below on, on everything, or is it just the salaries that we're, we're lagging behind on?
According to what my guys are saying, it's a salary. I mean, we pretty much get the vehicle, if we get a vehicle, but we pretty much got the equipment and stuff and come and need it. I know, I'm sure Jesse feels this way too, that law enforcement's at the bottom of the total. Nobody looks twice at us until they're something, go south, and then call the cops, the cops need to do the job. We get that all the time, we arrest somebody and they go to court, they out unbound the next day, well, how come he's out unbound?
Right.
That's not up to me.
No.
So I'd just like to say that, you know, I mean, I mean, I mean, I mean too. I would've liked to have, I guess, like to known about this here, it's like last fall, I guess, not just right now, I mean, it's just kind of out of the blue.
Well, I think it was all, it all was initiated when AJ left, and I think things started becoming more apparent, right?
Um, partially that, um, I did hear about it previously, like I said. But I didn't realize how far it was until I talked to Terry about wages, and it kinda just blew me away, once, once I heard that. Then I, you know, got the actual numbers that can maybe, you know, just blow in smoke, you know, um, and then I got Buell's too, and, I mean.
It, it was roughly right around the time where the posting, where the, uh, posting was listed in, and he's looking on teletype. Teletype's our system that we use for like running more checks and vehicles and people and stuff like that.
That's based on eighty-five percent of what San Tony and AJ makes.
What's that?
That was based on eighty-five percent.
Sure.
Of what Tony said.
So, but, uh, my point being was that it, it's actually pretty rare, you just intermittently hear.
It needs to go up.
Yeah, here and there receive through teletype a message saying, hey, our agency's hiring, and then they go through the whole spiel, the, the job posting, right, starting wages, this, that, and the other thing. This particular day, I got, I saw Hazen's pop up, and then two others, which the closest was like fifty-five, seven, or something like that, starting, which.
Where was that at?
Uh, Morton County, I believe. I could be wrong, don't quote me on that, I could be completely wrong, but that, that worked out to be like twenty-five, or, I, I can't, I can't do math, so. But anyways, I did at the time, and it was higher than the twenty-three fifty, even at that rate, and that was the closest that I had seen, but anyways. It was Hazen's, that, and then another one, that was like twenty-seven fifteen an hour starting wage. And then that's when I started hearing people say, hey, who's gonna come, you know, multiple people coming up to me, who's gonna be working for twenty-three fifty an hour, and then, you know. I don't know if that was, it seems to be about that time is when.
And again, I, I, I will go back to the insurance as well, you know, you had our insurance, there's, it's, it's more than, it's, it's better than a twenty-three fifty an hour.
Well, I understand it's a compensation package as a whole.
Absol- absolutely, we don't know that when you see things like that, or when someone says, you know.
They paid a hundred percent though too, at that fifty, starting at the fifty-five, and like I said, it was, it was actually shocking when I'm going through the list. Cause we had to do some tweaking on our job, our, our, you know, posting for the county, and we're going through and trying to compare to see what, you know, people are putting in their. In their descriptions and stuff like that, just get some ideas, and there's a surprising amount of places, like, I would say a majority end up paying a hundred percent premiums. On top of the other attraction is the law person pers program for retirement, like, that's a big deal too. So I, I would like to say, yeah, that that's, that should be, and it used to be a main draw, I mean, when I, when I worked here, it was a main draw.
Yes.
So then on that twenty-three dollar. Dollar range, range there, is that the full pay, or is that the?
That's the.
The starting at eighty-five percent?
Yeah, that's the starting at the eighty-five, um, if you look on that back page, Casey, I got Sam's.
Oh, here the starting.
And Jim's right on there. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Gotcha, sorry, I thought you seen the packet sitting there. Might make a little more sense to you, looking at it that way, sorry.
Yeah, no, no problem.
I was late.
All right, I was like a half hour early and he still didn't tell me about it.
Sorry, forgot to use that for you, whatever.
You need more discussion? Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Folkers.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Overdor.
Aye.
We have to do some budget work.
Correct. Thank you guys.
They deserve it, you know, it's.
Jim, do you have anything else to add, overall?
I don't think so.
Not just about the wages, but anything with the P D at all?
No, P D can, we, like I said, all the office is clean when it's necessary, and Dave's crew cuts the grass. Close the grass and pick up leaves, so. We don't have to do that.
We'll figure it out. Myra, H C D.
Kind of good news, uh, we have a couple of people who are doing some research into renovations of the Lauderdale's buildings, so we have two people who are interested in.
Awesome.
No indication of what they're gonna offer, we don't, we talked about that, obviously.
Sure.
Did you remind them or motivate them?
I did not, um, we told them about the Renaissance soul, and flex pace, those kinds of things that we can help them with.
Suppose they're in the Renaissance.
Indubitably the city, so, one of them came and got the, um, blueprints, see if they can do what they want to, and the other one is looking at costs and things. Did a little direction there as far as, you know, what to look for in financing, what kinds of things might be available, told them that our lenders are well-versed in. What kinds of things are available, and then the only other thing they have is the annual meeting, I guess, has always been held in March Rabbit. I was gonna do the third Tuesday, but, or fourth Tuesday, but I'm gonna do the fourth Wednesday, I believe. Because, uh, otherwise we have the same problem always, we have fall games.
And what day is that?
About twenty-sixth, I believe.
March twenty-first.
I'm gonna be getting things out here shortly, and I'll be sending out, um. Membership notices, I kinda would like to change that, they've been doing, they go off pretty late, I'd like them to go at the end of December, so that people. Get them paid before they pay all the other things.
Yeah, thank you, Myra. All right, ten A. Post prom committee meeting fund request, last couple of years, we've given three hundred dollars. Maybe before that, I think three years ago was a hundred twenty-five, something, yeah. What was the, what would you guys like to do, something, anything, nothing?
I'll make a motion to do the three hundred dollars again.
Okay, motion by Weidrich.
Second one.
Second by Folkers, discussion. We need a roll call, all right, Monty, we're starting mine, roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Folkers.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Overdor.
Aye, motion carried, thank you.
Uh, twelve, uh, the February seventeenth meeting is on President's Day. I know that city offices are closed that day. Anybody have any issues going on the eighteenth, that Tuesday?
I might be gone.
I don't know if Commissioner Hack has anything that night or not, or. Would you be gone on the seventeenth as well, Casey?
I think it's a two-day training, I think I came down to Vismark, I think, so.
I'm, I'm good either way.
I could, I could make the eighteenth work.
Okay, all right, then we'll let Monty have the entire day off and not just the, the workday. Okay, we'll move our meeting to February eighteenth.
Sitting outside by myself.
Move down to public comments. Nobody here. Approve of the bills.
Motion to approve bills is presented.
Motion by Weidrich, second, second by Folkers, discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Folkers.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Overdor.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Off the record, I don't think three dollar is gonna help us hire anybody.